We'll call the meeting to order. Katie is not with us at this time, we'll just work on the plan when she gets here. We'll do that. Would everyone please stand, place a flag if you're so inclined and join us as we say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so, do we have any additions or any changes to the agenda? If not, I would look for a motion to approve, as shown. Motion by Bill, second.
Second.
By Anna. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Youth skills training presentation.
We've got a student scheduled here tonight and I can't remember the M N's name.
Preston Parks.
Preston, yes. I suppose we can maybe keep going through the agenda.
I think that's better. Okay, reports and communications. Our school board liaison is not with us this evening. So we'll move down to school board committee reports. Hi Katie.
Hello, sorry, I was at a conference.
Okay, does anybody have any committee reports that they'd like to share?
Staff development has met. I met with them last week. Everything's on track and going well and they were just organizing for what their upcoming... Now I'm losing my train of thought. Like their upcoming workshop days were gonna be. And so, but all's well, going good.
Okay, negotiations. We continue to meet with the teachers' union and make some progress. Kate?
Well, I'm looking at the, the foundation is, they're not meeting this week, they're meeting on the 24th, Thursday, 24th.
We check his meeting on Thursday. And we're gonna be reviewing and going on our bylaws.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving down to administration, administrative reports. Elementary had a company for us on file here, I'm sure.
No, no. Had the high school already worked.
No one from technology. CD and activities. No ops, operations. When I, when I say that sometimes I'm thinking that there's gonna be some kind of frivolous or other conversations, so. Suits report.
Yes, really, I have a few reminders and then just an update on the McGee Ellis tree plot, potential donation. We've met, maybe twice since we've had our last board meeting, but we have engaged with the D N R to come out and take a look at our facility, or I guess our land boundaries and what we currently have and identify what we currently have as an outdoor classroom space and how to enhance that area as well, potentially through planning with the potential donation here by the McGee Ellis family. And so, where we are at currently with that is the D N R is going to work with Dave Peterson on putting together a bunch of different options to present back to our group of individuals involved in this process. And from there, we will troubleshoot and maybe narrow down the amount of options to present to the family of what could be appropriate. If they are willing to convene before, what that, the options, so. Feel very comfortable with the process and it's done very well so far. There's a lot of stakeholders within the process, so. Feel very good about that. Other than that, I got a couple of reminders here. Reminder of the strategic planning that will be starting next Monday night. We are gonna be in the elementary auditorium, starting at six o'clock that night. And that will be the community member part of the process where we've invited the community to take part in the initial parts to give us some feedback on what we've been doing well, what we can improve upon and what people would like to see moving forward. And then, the second reminder is we've been getting notifications of the upcoming MSBA conference in January with a housing notice and a registration notice, so. If you are planning on still going to that on January 16th and 17th, to make sure to let Lori know so that we can plan on housing and registering as well. Unless you have questions, let's all get out.
Could you expand a little bit on that tree plot?
Yeah.
Where's the location of it?
Well, that's kinda what we're deciding, or at least looking at different options. The, forgive my directions here with the end, but right out here on the other side of the tennis courts, there's a pond, which I was made aware of during the last meeting. And there is an outdoor classroom area that has been planned out, or it's a very rudimentary classroom area. But there were some thoughts about possibly enhancing that area to be a little bit more student friendly, I guess, have some seating areas and a lectern type area. Cleaning up some of the trails, especially the ones that were damaged during the big storm last September that had knocked down some trees. And plus, we need to get some buckthorn out of the trails and clean them up so it'll be easier to walk through for students. We need to identify what trees we have and what, the possibility of what type of trees we'd like to see donated, if at all possible. So that is one area. Another area is right along the drive between the middle school, high school and the elementary road on the right hand side. There used to be a grove of trees in that area that got taken out by the storm as well. That has potential to have some trees down in there. We've also talked about apple trees as a possibility with the possibility of growing some apples here that kids could consume on site as well as through the learning process. Another plot is on the way backside between our land and the church, is it St. Ansker's on the backside over there? Have some hardwood identification areas. And so, those are the three areas that we're mainly looking at right now. And so, we'll put some plans to paper and run it through the committee and see what we come up with.
That area just on the other side of the tennis courts, I always thought it was kind of a slough almost, not a lot of.
It is a nature area.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on any of these processes? Moving on to old business, we have none. Moving on to new business, consideration to approve the Bold guidelines.
Through some of my various discussions since I started here and really part of this process, we've been asked to update and put in some more specifics into our online learning days, which is referred to as the Bomber Online Learning Days or Bold Guidelines. And what we did is we took this policy, now have a paper copy of the old policy in front of you, and you'll see the new copy in your packet as well. And so, what we did is we basically took a lot of the language out of the statute and put it into what we currently have in front of you for new policy to further define what are expected from both staff and students on those days. And we ran this through the policy committee and brought it forward to you for approval as we head into the winter season. We were almost a week late on that, if we would've gotten more snow than we did earlier, so. But we're looking for your approval on these guidelines.
For teacher telephone numbers, it says that teachers must be accessible online and by telephone. So how does that work?
Yeah, we're gonna have a process in place that we're gonna actually talk about tomorrow at the administration meeting, our admin meeting, where we have teachers that are notified via voicemail, where they receive, if they are at home, they'll receive an email that they can listen to, other voicemail here at school. And then they would in turn call families back, or them likely with a blocked number if the teachers don't wanna give out.
Sure.
Okay, I was gonna ask about that.
We looked at other options, including Google Voice or Google phone, I can't remember the exact name of it. That, there is issues with that process, both turning on and turning off and then have it, I believe it would have always been on and attached to that teacher's phone, so they would have been constantly, they had the possibility of getting calls at all kinds of day and night. So, we figured this is probably gonna be the best option for them.
We never thought we'd be using Bold to the degree that we did the past winter, we did more than our share. And it may, it may happen again this way, it sounds. Hopefully not. Other questions for Jeff on this? Now I would look for a motion to approve the new Bold guidelines. So move. Move by Mike, second. Second by Katie. Other discussion?
There was some conversation, I wasn't able to kind of, wanting to get it more in line with the statute, right? And I think one of the concerns was what you mentioned with the teachers being available throughout the school. So, you think that's gonna be a viable resource, this Google?
Oh, yes.
Cause I spoke of.
It, it won't be Google phone, it'll be a voicemail that is left here at school saying, please call me back, or whatever. And then, the teacher is responsible for answering.
Checking messenger.
Yeah, they'll get a message into their email.
How is this?
That's how it'll work then, okay.
How is this information gonna be given to the parents so that parents are aware ahead of time on how to contact the teachers, or how their child can contact the teachers and?
We will send out a message to the parents via our school messenger.
Okay.
Email or out through the principals and their messenger systems to the parents.
Like soon here before the weather would?
Yes.
Hit?
Yeah, the idea would be tomorrow or when.
Sure, right, okay.
The policy. We communicate this out.
So how does it work then? If I have a question for a teacher, I call the school and I leave a message. How does that get routed to that individual teachers?
We will have the, the teachers, one thing that we've discovered during this process is that the teachers' extensions were not on the website. And so, they will be now on the website. And so, if you wanna call teacher X, just go to the website, look up, and you use the general phone number and then dial their extension. Leave a message, that'll get routed to their email.
Sure.
And then call back.
Do all the teachers know, like, or have a way for getting accessibility to know how to block their phone number?
It is part of the current process as well, once the policy.
I just would hate for someone to have that abused.
Yep, no, they will, they will have that laid out for them as how to use the technology.
Sure.
Okay, anyone else? We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the amended Bold guidelines. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. I was remiss about public input. Does anyone have anything that they would like to address the board on for any reasons?
Yes, Valerie, I'm here. I'm here, my name is Heather Lashkey, for those of you that don't know who I am. But I'm here to talk to the board about getting approval for fundraising for We the People, which is our academic competition that we do in my AP government class. We're a little bit different than other clubs and organizations on campus, simply because, one, we don't charge a fee. It's part of my AP government class. And we have a very short window of time to raise a substantial amount of money. Last year it cost us close to thirty thousand dollars to take the students, there were fifteen students, and then Mr. Strauss and I to Washington DC. We have been participating in the We the People competition probably since two thousand and, I wanna say, gosh, four. So for quite a long time, Cannon has a very, very successful reputation in the program. We've gone to nationals at least six or seven times. We will compete at the state, state competition on December 11th this year. Cannon will win. We just, we're kind of a powerhouse in the competition. And so, us going to Washington DC isn't really a, well, what if you win, we will win. And so, I have a very, very active class this year that really wants to jump on fundraising. Last year, it cost some of my families, well, all of my families, almost close to a thousand dollars. And we've never, I've never in the years that I've done this, had to ask parents for that amount of money. The most it's ever been has been six hundred dollars. And this would include their five days out in DC, four nights in a hotel, all their meals. It's pretty much an all-inclusive trip for them. And so, it was very disheartening to have to go to parents last year and say, I need more money, I need more money. I'm hoping that if we can stretch it out a little bit longer and get actively busy fundraising now, that maybe we can lessen that a little bit and get back to more kind of a reasonable amounts for families. I've laid in front of you some things that we've done in the past and kind of where our dollar amounts have been, cause that was just last year. Some new ideas, the kids wanted to sell something called corn bags. Apparently, it's kind of a heater bag that you warm up.
You can throw in the freezer.
Okay, I'm not as familiar with them, but there was one young lady that said her mom makes them and thought that they'd be something that we could sell at any of the athletic events or something like that. And, you know, we called ahead and asked if we could bag groceries again at Family Fair. We're tentatively penciled in if we can get permission to do that. We'd like to take advantage of some of those opportunities, just simply because those are holidays and a lot of grocery shopping goes on. Metal signs have been positive, although last year, you know, I've gotta have go-getters that wanna use that plasma cutter. They need to be knowledgeable how to do that, and it can be kind of tedious. So the previous year, I had two gentlemen that were really great about it, they did it all the time. Last year, we just struggled with having somebody just kind of, you know, be on top of that. This year though, I do have a couple of young men that know how to use it and are willing to cut signs and make signs. You know, even if we could start selling those earlier too, and start taking more custom orders and whatnot, that would help. Our donation letter is probably always our biggest fundraiser, just simply asking people, although I always feel horribly guilty going around and asking people to donate. Although Cannon, you know, they've been great, our civic organizations always come through, but, you know, every year this trip costs us a little bit more. Last year, the price tag was around seventeen hundred dollars per student, and I would imagine this year it's gonna cost a little bit more. And so, the earlier we can get going on this, I just think it would be better for parents and students in the long run. And so, I, I know that fundraising will all have to be approved. Like I said, we're a little bit different than other clubs and organizations on campus, just because we have such a small window and we need to raise a substantial amount of money in a very, very short period of time. We certainly would have come earlier and asked, but there's just been some ideas that the kids have come up with recently where now we feel like we've got some ideas and they wanna get going and, and so here we are.
When is the national competition?
It'll be the last week in April. And so, we would leave on that Friday and come back on Tuesday. Although, you know, depending on what we can raise, I honestly, I would love to take kids out of date earlier, just so that they can do a little bit more sightseeing. When we're out there, we get out there, we get in in the afternoon, and we really need to spend that time in a hotel in the evening prepping for competition. And then, you compete either Saturday morning or Sunday morning, and then it's vice versa, depending on what you did the previous day. But there are two nights in a row where they really need to be in the hotel back, you know, with their groups, with myself or Mr. Strauss and studying and going over this material. And so, that cuts into some of their sightseeing times, especially like in the evening with monuments and memorials and things like that. Wisconsin, the last couple of years, has been taking kids out of date earlier and just kind of, you know, getting in, relaxing, go see that stuff, and then kind of get into task. And so, although it's gonna cost more money, you know, if we had the opportunity, I'd love to go out there just, or even stay a day later, you know, on, on the back end of that kind of thing.
What are you, what are you specifically asking for?
Mr. Brittonall, I would like permission to fundraise, just in general, whatever we need to do to raise the amount of money that it's gonna take to get us out there. And so, I'm asking prior to saying, hey, we won the state title, I know we're gonna win the state title. I'm just asking that we can repeat past fundraisers, and if we have to come up with something brand new, because somebody comes up with something brand new. Right now, I have a student teacher who's full of energy and ideas, and he's always trying to come up with something new. And so, if we have something that's just not on the list, I'm just asking in general to get a blessing to go fundraise.
When would you start funding?
As soon as possible, yeah.
And what happens after that if you didn't win the state competition?
We have a fund balance. I mean, we have, you know, and we would just keep it in the accounting. You know, there was one year where the kids didn't wanna go to the national competition, but they wanted to go out there. And so, you know, there's always that option too, but, I don't know.
That's a great experience, I think, just going to DC.
It's a great experience.
Yes, they do.
You know, sometimes, we tried to split things up in years past, in recent years past, into service requests and product requests, for lack of better. If you get hit up in the community lot for candy bars or something, that's, it, it becomes, it just seems like everybody keeps knocking on the door. If it's a service-related thing, you know, and it's a car wash, you can just choose not to go and get your car washed. So, are you asking for any combination thereof?
Right now, Mr. Brittonall, we're not asking to sell any kind of product, except for maybe our metal signs. But then again, you know, I'm not coming to your house and saying, hey, do you wanna buy a metal sign? It's more or less maybe displaying the product out at maybe an expo or, you know, setting up at a, at, you know, an athletic event and somebody saying, hey, I've always wanted a, you know, I don't know if we have any metal signs in the room. Yeah, you know, just saying, oh, I've wanted, I've always wanted a family sign, and therefore I choose and want to. We've had some repeat customers. I have one lady that already said from last year, I hope you're doing this again because I have an idea for a sign that I want done. I have another parent who, they constructed something for their son for graduation that they displayed at graduation, and now she's got a daughter coming and she wants another sign made for, with her graduation year and things like that. And so, it's not necessarily really selling a product in the sense that it's pizzas or candy bar or something like that.
So, what would a price tag be? Are all of them four seventy-five?
No, that was just what we made, yeah. They're anywhere, they're anywhere from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars. Although, Mr. Hodges had just kind of informed us that now the state is gonna make us start selling, or putting sales tax on them. And so, we'll kind of have to play with, with that and be conscious of that.
So I think one of the other thoughts with the fundraising is that there is not a overlap of another organization, and I don't think any of these.
No, and every single time my student teacher brings something up, like, hey, how about this? I'll say, well, that group or that club or whatever is. And so, yeah, we're trying to be individualized, we're trying to be unique. I don't wanna burden somebody with buying stuff they really don't wanna buy. And then, you know, the process is always trying to find something that's gonna earn money in a short amount of time.
Mr. Sampson, any recommendations coming from admin on this at all?
I, I think we could probably work with, if you don't know what you need to order yet, but if you give us structure around what, we could approve it if you guys are okay with that. If you're okay with the metal signs or the silent option, or whatever category you wanna fit them into. If you wanna have myself and Jake be the approvers of whatever you feel you need to come to, I think that would be my recommendation as of right now, cause we really don't know what you want us to approve, is that accurate?
Right, just permission to fundraise. And so, when we come up with ideas, yeah, I'd like to be able to say, Mr. Sampson, this, we have this idea, you know, can, can we run with it?
So the bake sale, I don't think that's probably likely.
That one we did actually off-campus last year, and we, we actually were invited to that. They had it at the senior living right on Highway nineteen, kind of over by the Casey Grocery Store, at that senior living apartment or whatever. And so, there was a lady that organized that for the community that knew that we were fundraising and said, well, you can have a table here. And much like some other members of the community had tables set up, the kids brought baked items to that location.
Heather, do you say, how many kids do you think will go?
The, to be compliant with national rules, they all need to go. So if they're enrolled in the class, then, then they're going, they're competing, and I have sixteen. So it'll be myself, it'll be Mr. Strauss, and possibly my student teacher.
We wouldn't necessarily be, be voting on this to allow them to bring back ideas to you necessarily. Isn't that kind of what we're talking about now?
Yeah, I think if you wanna get allowed, I think you're, you're asking for permission to be allowed to fundraise, but we don't know what fundraiser you.
Right, cause like, it's, it's not gonna be one sole thing that we're gonna be able to raise all of our money on. We're gonna have to come up with a variety of different ideas, which we've done in the past.
Yeah, as long as there's some approval involved, I think I'm fine with it, just approving to fundraise.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the fundraising idea itself, as long as the individual fundraisers are run through admin.
Let's put it on the agenda, which we didn't do. So, item one A would be the We the People fundraiser. Yeah, I'm sure we need to do that as well.
Can I make a motion to add it?
Second.
We the People fundraiser, we've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda item. Brenda on the motion, Anna on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? That is carried. Now that we added it to the agenda, we should put one, one B on there and approve, approve the fundraiser with, is there a caveat here that we need to?
Well, I just think it should be noted that, that admin is the one. I mean, admin will approve individual fundraisers, but we will approve the general concept of fundraisers.
We approve the concept and final, final, we will allow the suit to make those decisions. Sounds right?
It's a great idea.
Okay, and Mike made that motion, and who seconded that motion?
I seconded it.
Brenda did. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to, to continue with the fundraiser at the, after it meets the qualifications of the admin. Sound ready?
Yeah, I mean, what would you say, you know, like the bake sale, you wouldn't be able to do something like that on school grounds?
Right.
So, just clarifying things like that.
Make sure that it's legal.
Right, things of that nature, and we're not having that overlap between other organizations.
I promise we will conduct it legal.
Yeah. So that would be up to you, when, as long as it meets those requirements.
Mike on the motion, Brenda on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
You will win.
I'll take the golfers and ruckers next week.
Consideration to approve the nineteen twenty winter assistant coaches.
This, this list is a partial list, as I had explained today by Jake. These are the ones that need to be approved at this point. Obviously, there's still a few weeks left before some of the other sport seasons get moving, and I think Jake is still in the process of hiring them, so he will have another list for DC in two weeks.
Yes.
Or next week.
We should have it on there.
Which is still a coming time.
Are, are, are these all paid positions, or somebody's volunteer in this list?
They will be all paid, unless they're indicated voluntary.
They all meet with our schedule C requirements and stay within the confines of our budget anyway. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
Motion by Katie to approve the winter assistant head coaches, as shown, second. Be along the second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the nineteen twenty annual assurance of compliance.
This is a yearly item that the board needs to approve to. This is a yearly item that the board needs to approve to um we hand into the state, assuring the state that we are not breaking federal rules when it comes to discrimination and use of funds. And I assure you that we are not.
Easy enough, we have to do this every year. Motion? Mr. Motion. Bill on the motion, Brenda on the second, other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to set a date for the MSBA school board training and suit hiring process follow-up. We had a quorum issue last time. And what would you like to do, folks?
Do we know what MSBA's availability is?
I, no.
No.
So we might not start there.
Yeah, good. We did struggle with this, I guess, just a little bit, um, it was, it's part of our contractual agreement with them. And is it something that we wanna plug in as we're getting closer and closer to busy time of year? It has its merits. But uh, what would you like to see? Cause we paid for the process, we should uh.
Well, there's some of that, but I think going into the strategy meetings, you know, we're kind of piling up, and so.
Yeah. I think, yeah.
Is there some content that they can share with us? As a, is it an agenda that maybe give a feel for what we're gonna be spending our time on?
Is it more to do with like goal setting for the superintendent, the role of the superintendent of the board versus the strategic planning is kind of maybe a different thing, but it seems like it's some overlap.
Yes, in my view, the strategic planning might actually tie in well with this, but having this done after the strategic plan, because you're gonna be wanting to set goal, or if it, my understanding is that this process is, some of it is for goal setting of the superintendent. But you wanna know what your.
What our goals are.
What your goals are, to tie that to at that point, so.
That's what I, maybe leads into getting an agenda and explaining the scenario of what we're looking to get into with the strategy meeting. And do it maybe later in the year.
It would be later in the year, wouldn't it, probably be, look in December or so almost, wouldn't it?
We didn't, we didn't need to know what their availability is, I mean, we can't really expect a date, we don't know what their schedule looks like.
What would your recommendation be on this, just to contact the MSBA rep, would it be Sandy Dunlop, I think?
It could be November.
Could, you meet December sixteenth for Truth and Taxation, which isn't usually a large agenda, so if you want me to see if she's available that day?
That would be nice.
Then you don't have to do a special thing and extend it.
Although, I have to say though, that night is the choir concert, and I really do wanna try and get to my kids' choir concert.
Do you know what's going on?
They all sing.
December second or ninth, those are also Monday's other chances, if you wanna still stay in December.
What time is the choir concert, would you guess?
It's at seven.
Would we attempt to do a five-thirty meeting that evening, or a five o'clock meeting that evening? And then uh, we'll begin with that and then have the Truth and Taxation after that?
Do we know how much time?
Yeah, that they want.
Because I feel like it's longer than an hour.
She wants at least two hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna disparage the Truth and Taxation, but we have between one and none show up for that.
Correct.
So if you were, if you were able to stick it out with us until, if we start at five, set it for seven?
Yeah.
Set the Truth and Taxation.
It's right here, so I just have to walk over.
The Truth and Taxation is already set at, so, which is fine, you could just take a break, hold the tax- taxation portion, go back to it.
What'd you all feel about that?
What day is it?
It's the sixteenth of December.
What's wrong with November, though?
Are we gonna have three strategic meetings?
Yes.
I think we are.
The last one is on the fifth.
Yeah. Cause we have October twenty-first.
What usually happens is, you'll go through that last meeting and then she'll come back and present a final, for you to approve more than.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you might, you might know what that plan looks like on the twenty-fifth.
But then at Thanksgiving.
And then, you know, what do you wanna do after that?
Okay. Okay. So.
I like the idea of the sixteenth, just because that's going to be a somewhat brief meeting. But it would require everybody to be here at five bells.
I'll ask her. Is there a starting date anyway?
Yeah, starting point.
Is there a second date that you want me to even check on, or?
Well, any other Mondays.
Ninth or something?
Yeah, the second or the ninth.
The week of the second, I will be out.
Okay.
I, I guess you guys can.
Whether through the fourth.
What if I was to get scolded? Maybe the ninth?
Oh, the ninth is our younger school board.
No. No.
There isn't, there's only one in December. But if you want me to check the ninth, unless three or four of you know off the bat, that's not gonna be a goal.
It's good for me.
I will be gone.
On the ninth?
I can be here on the ninth.
The ninth would be better than the sixteenth, showing.
Do you think we can, we can just check on the feasibility for both dates?
Yep.
And see what it carries, you know, then we can.
Or what other dates they have.
And then if they give you up any dates, like as an option or whatever, you can ask for those too.
You all okay with it?
So then they do wanna still do five to seven, do like that, or do you wanna go a different time?
Well, we could do, it's six works better, I think, for other people.
We'd rather do a six to eight.
Yeah, yeah.
On the ninth, okay. All right, I'll let you know.
But the sixteenth would be five to.
Five to seven or whatever.
And I wonder if that's, it's, yeah, I just feel Bennett's doing an extra choir group this year, and I just really wanna be there for it.
You don't have to apologize for wanting to scare a kid at an activity.
I know, and all three of them sing, so.
Well, there's a consideration to set a date, but there's no real action item here, so I don't think we need to deal with action item. Okay, informational items, next full board meeting is October twenty-eighth at six o'clock. Much more, if you have anything that you, you deal, should, we should be placing add on the agenda, please contact Jeff or Lori, and we can get it put on there. Among the discussion items are the items, we'll be dealing with the fiscal year nineteen audit, our seniority list, and other items that may be coming up. Uh, board members, any additional information, news reports? I'm not sure if that's uh belongs to the agenda, if you have anything to add, but anything to add for the evening? This is one of those in us book nights, getting done early. Okay, anything else for the cause? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mike, seconded by? Seconded by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are closed.